All right, it's 6:00 PM and I will call the January meeting of the Mayor and Council to order. You'll all stand, we'll have a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff, I want to do our, Councilman Bridges is going to our invocation.
Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Father God for letting us see a new year, dear heavenly Father. Father God, just thank us, thank you for allowing us to serve this community, dear heavenly Father. And right now, Father God, as we go through this meeting tonight, that you will grace it with your presence and that we would do things in decency in order to glorify you. And dear heavenly Father, all the loved ones that we have lost in the last couple of weeks, dear heavenly Father. That we pray for the families and also for the 39th president, President Jimmy Carter, the president, former president of the United States of America passed away at 100 years old, Father God. And we would like to pray for his family as well. These are all of the blessings. In your dear son, Jesus Christ's name, we all do pray and let every heart say amen.
Amen. All right, thank you. Okay, I've been made aware, we don't have any citizens' comments at this time. You have a copy of the minutes from the December 24, 2024 meetings. Do you have a motion to adopt? Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to adopt? Any corrections or addition? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, at this time, we'll have our Mayor and Council announcements and comments. I'm going to start off myself tonight. I just want to remember those people that were in New Orleans this weekend and there was some local family ties to some of the people that were injured. So, of course, we want to remember all of them that were injured and the ones that lost their life. And the other thing is Bishop Sam Salz. He was a great member of our community. He was a big supporter of our pastors' meetings and Lions Club and just, he was one of those people when, he always had something positive to say, he always had something good to say and he just made you smile. That was the kind of person he was. So, we're definitely going to miss him in our community. The other thing we have, I want to say thank you to our marketing and recreation department for, I have had so many positive comments about our ice skating rink. And I'm glad we were able to do that. We've had lots of participation and a lot of people from outside the city that came in and when people come in, they tend to eat, buy gas, they even shop. So, it was a really good thing and I appreciate all the dedication that the employees have given to make sure everything went well. I have also, I want to say, I hope everyone had happy holidays and I hope this year is good and prosperous for everyone. And at this time, we'll go down to Council Lady Bridges.
Good evening. She doesn't say it most of mine, so I ain't got but a few now. I just want to commend the Carrollton Parks and Recs for the beautification into our city cemetery. It's beautiful, thank them for their hard work. I also want to commend Ray Lynn for them doing a great job with the Midtown Water Park. It's looking beautiful over there and my grandbaby, every time we pass by, "Is it ready yet?" I said, "Girl, it's freezing. It ain't time for the water park yet. It's about to get ready." Every time we go by, she got something to say. And I also had the opportunity this morning to go to the ribbon cutting of the new Caribbean solo food restaurant on Maple Street. And it's beautiful in there and just looking forward to tasting some of that Caribbean food. And the last one is, I just thank God for another new year, 2025. It's time to thrive and looking forward to a great year. And I just want to tell my Mayor and Council, I love y'all. Great record what you do. And that's all.
Okay. Councilman LeBeau.
Yes, I'm just excited about another good year ahead of us. We've got a lot of projects going on in the city. It looks like the pickleball courts that are out at Lake Shore will be ready early spring. So, if you're like me and you don't know how to play pickleball, get ready because you're going to have the opportunity to play. You won't have to be fighting for time over on Longview Street to get a court. But I'm just excited about another good year coming up. Thank you.
Councilman Gibbs.
I just want to echo that sentiment. I am so grateful for the opportunity. I've had to serve this past year and I'm looking so forward to the remaining three years. So, I want to thank everyone for their support and I'll be learning to play pickleball as well. Happy New Year.
Councilman Ogle, you got any comments you want to make?
Don't get stuck in Atlanta. Two hours and 10 minutes from Perimeter Mall.
Oh, my gosh, bless your heart.
Just very thankful for living in such a great city during Christmas time and in Carrollton was great. Looking forward to 2025.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just reiterate what most of you've said. I just appreciate the folks that made our Christmas season, our holiday season, so special here in Carrollton from the programs that we had downtown, you know, the parade, the Christmas market, the ice skating rink, the concerts, just all the things that we've done. It's literally something to do almost every night, whether it be at the Cultural Arts Center, at the AMP, at the skate rink downtown. And it's just, it's a special place. I appreciate the marketing team, the Parks and Rec team, but also the ones behind the scenes, the public works and the folks that helped do all the decorating. Just do such a great job of that. Really, really appreciate that. And just looking forward again to a great year next year.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda items for consideration. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda items?
Madam Mayor, if you would, before we approve, I would like to make an amendment to remove item number nine. We're not ready at this time to proceed with that appointment.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve with the removal of item nine of the agenda?
I approve the agenda and also item nine offered the agenda.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions, any additions or other deletions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Our first item of the agenda is our Mayor Pro Tem appointment. And we do this in rotation, so everybody gets a chance to serve. And this year, it would be Councilmember Jaclyn Bridges. So, do I have a motion to appoint Councilmember Jaclyn Bridges as Mayor Pro Tem for the 2025 year?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is rezoning request, and this is going to include item two and three because these two are connected. So, I will let Ms. Studdard bring those to the floor.
Thank you. The first two zoning items on your agenda are rezoning requests for approximately 7.8 acres off of Abbey Lane and West White Street. And the request is to a residential PD for the development of a 54-unit townhome community and then one additional single-family lot fronting White Street. This results in an overall development density of approximately seven units per acre. The project was reviewed by the Planning Commission in two separate meetings. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the 3.8-acre tract adjacent to Abbey Lane in September. And then the additional 3.97-acre tract below this tract was added to the development and the Planning Commission approved this property in December. The Planning Commission recommended the following conditions of approval for the residential PD. Number one, that the developer establish a mandatory HOA and shall record an enforceable declaration of covenants for the community. Number two, these covenants shall specify that no more than 20% of the homes be leased at any one time and that they may only be occupied by a family of no more than two unrelated individuals. Number three, that the developer installs flock cameras at the entrances of the development. And then in addition to that, staff would also like to recommend another condition. We would want to recommend that the approval be conditioned on the successful development agreement with the city regarding the city-owned properties. I do believe that the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Before we let the applicant speak, I want to read something that will apply to the applicant and anyone speaking against it. No person in attendance shall speak unless formally recognized. Upon rising to speak, each person recognized shall state their name and home address. Speakers must not employ tactics of intimidation, profanity, or threats of violence in their comments. All comments shall be directed to the Mayor and Council, not to the petitioner or those in opposition. In accordance with Georgia law, each side, not each individual, is allowed a total of 10 minutes of public input. This means that all those speaking in favor of the request have a total of 10 minutes and all of those speaking in opposition of the request have a total of 10 minutes. Time devoted to questions and answers that the elected officials may ask should not be counted against any time limitations. Since we do have limited time, please try to avoid restating what another may have already stated. The applicant shall be allowed to speak first in order to present the application. Others may then speak, indicating first their support for or in opposition of the application. The applicant will then be allowed time for rebuttal. Rebuttal must be limited to points or issues raised by the opponents to the application at the hearing. So, I believe we have Mr. Tritt here with us. And we've had some problems of people not speaking into the microphone, so make sure you speak into the microphone.
I will do my best. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mason Tritt, 116 Crescent Drive here in Carrollton. I'm one of the owners of Tritt Quality Homes. Erica kind of gave you the macro of this project. We're looking to develop a 54-unit townhome community. But some of the, you know, more intricate details are, we're developing this community as a maintenance-free community. So, the HOA will actually cover all exteriors of buildings in addition to all the landscape requirements and that type of thing. If we're going to put our name on a development, we want to know that in 25 years, we can drive back over there and it's going to look pretty much the same as it was the day we finished up with the last unit. So, that's something we're pretty excited about. We expect those HOA dues to be between $200 and $225 a month for each of those units to cover those expenses. The community does have two dog parks, a large dog park and a small dog park with entrances off of Abbey Lane, which is right there off of Rome Street, and an entrance off of West White Street as well. In addition to that, those two dog parks, we have ample green space kind of at the end of the proposed street over there. Large buffers between all the homes in the community and the homes existing on Rome Street right now. We have roughly 28 guest spaces at this time. We expect to pick up a couple more in final engineering, you know, four to six more in the final engineering of the community. But those are kind of some of the micro details. We heard the, some of the citizen concerns in the first hearing with the Planning Commission around some of the existing Abbey Lane residents. So, we're trying to work with them at the entrance where Abbey Lane meets this new community to take out that cul-de-sac that's existing right there to kind of put in a little play area that both communities can use together. So, we would have to give them some kind of cross-easement. Important delineation is we will have separate HOAs. We will not marry into the existing Abbey Lane HOA. But then we'll have a little play area there hopefully and we will make sure they maintain all their parking that they currently have in that area. I think that's about it. If you have any questions.
Does anyone have questions? Okay, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
Margaret Campbell, I'm at 1005 Rome Street in Carrollton. In purchasing my house on Rome Street, I spent a lot of time and invested significant financial resources into the home that I truly love to spend with family and friends. My neighbors and I on Rome Street and West White Street are directly adjacent to both of the proposed rezoning requests. None of us were made aware by the developer of any official project that was being proposed. It wasn't until the survey of the property was being done in this fall, by chance, that I became aware of the development project. Currently, in addition to the 20-plus townhomes in Abbey Place, there are also townhomes at Westbury Place, Renwood, and West Chandler Street along the large apartment complexes on Ashley Oaks. Mr. Tritt and his company have stated that they have met with the residents on Abbey Place and taken their concerns into consideration. However, not once, even including at the zoning hearing last month, has Mr. Tritt or anyone from his company made any effort to speak to any of the homeowners on Rome Street or West White Street to my knowledge. By not taking the time to discuss the situation with the neighbors who could most likely be the opposition, he and his company missed a crucial opportunity to collaborate in order to come to an acceptable solution. This admission to me speaks volumes in the fact that there's a lack of respect with the residents who bear the greatest impact on our property. In addition, the original zoning signage on Abbey Place was in the most inconspicuous location, not visible to anyone other than the dead-end street on Abbey Place. I inquired with some of the members of the City Council and the Planning Zoning Board because I'm curious as to whether assessments have been made regarding the traffic and pedestrian flow on Rome Street and White Street. I was told that these types of assessments have not been completed. I would like to know if there's been an evaluation on additional impact on this area, including the school buses, traffic, accidents, and the sheer volume in an already congested area. Having projections being created to determine whether the additional homes will create more chaos and danger in the area. I would also like to know the current number of cars, traffic stops, and accidents on both of these streets. Additionally, since this has been called a walking community, I'd like data regarding the pedestrian use and accidents involving pedestrians. From my anecdotal perspective, I know that cars are constantly speeding and running stop signs on both of these streets. Even last night, as I sat in my house, over one order, three traffic stops were made in front of my house. It's my understanding that we will have 54 townhomes with three parking places each, which means an additional 162 vehicles on a daily basis. I've located an assessment of the area in accordance with GOT guidance. This assessment includes a number of crashes that have occurred but does not include the number of traffic stops that did not result in a crash. This should have been done prior to approval of rezoning to include, but not limited to whether the current speed limit is appropriate, whether additional lighting will be necessary, whether an addition of a sidewalks or bike lanes with new sidewalks, crosswalks on West White Street will be needed. What is the projected increase on traffic? Again, it would have been important to have known these during the walking and observations of the city property for the new developers to discuss with all the neighbors and property owners. Since there are no sidewalks on White Street and the developers have stated that the new development is for walkability to the downtown area, the only option for the 162-plus residents is to walk through the entire project in the direction opposite of the square and walk down Abbey Place to a safe sidewalk. This route is significantly out of the way when the residents are actually attempting to walk to the square. Since West White Street does not have sidewalks and is currently a dangerous place to walk, residents will attempt to cross through Indulge Day Spa on my property. Neither I nor the owners of Indulge are minimal to the solution of foot traffic through our properties. We're highly opposed to strangers entering our properties. I'm not opposed to additional residents in this area. However, 54 townhomes is excessive in an already congested area, especially when the proper data has not been collected. Is there consideration on adding patio homes on a smaller scale and the new homes without the large impact on the area? Very similar to what Tritt has done on West Chandler Street. In speaking with my commissioner last year, I was told that the property behind our home is owned by the city, which I have all the property lines, and was green space. Not knowing until last month at the zoning meeting that this property is being deeded to these developers and was never put up for sale to anyone with the option to buy this property. And my question is why? Why was this given to a developer who also bought a home on West White Street to cut through a new street? I speak for myself, saying that this is concerning to me for a developer who's new to our community and has not been here very long. It feels as though the lack of transparency on these deals is a little unnerving. While I realize that the area is landlocked, we as citizens of Carrollton should have the option to purchase the property, especially those that are adjacent to the landlocked property. I might ask Randy, who owns Indulge, to speak at this time regarding that.
Good evening, I'm Randy Hanscom. My wife and I live out on Sharp's Creek Reservoir and we own two businesses here in town. One of them's Indulge Salon and Day Spa on Rome Street. My concerns are just twofold. Number one, if it's a walking community, I would like to see a way that the foot traffic can bypass her property and ours on the way to get downtown. If you look at White Street right there, it's a tough street to walk on on a good day. On a bad day, it's really difficult and dangerous and I think there needs to be a lot of consideration put onto that part of the plan. The second thing is, and the one that really unnerves me is, if that property's for sale, put it up for sale. I mean, you can't, don't cut a deal with someone and then come in for a zoning, after the zoning, do a deal. What's he going to pay for the property? Is it going to be literally deeded to him? I mean, once again, if that's an opportunity to buy, I'm interested. I've never heard it, never saw anything, go by there all the time. There was never any signs, postings, anything online. So, it just seems, once again, I don't know what the goal is. Hey, I understand wanting to generate property taxes for the city. The land sitting there is not generating any revenue and I understand that you're, you know, in your purview to generate tax revenue and I applaud the efforts. I'm pro-development. I mean, you know, I've been in the building materials industry most of my life, so worked with a lot of production home builders. Have nothing against good, strong development, but what's being developed may or may not be the best fit, but I just think there needs to be a lot more input on what we can do with the space, particularly financially, before we make some big decision like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last couple of things that I'd just like to say is in regards to the 20% allowed rentals. My question is, how are they going to enforce that? Is the HOA going to enforce it? How are they going to enforce only two people living that are, and the residents that are not related to each other? So, those questions, how are they actually going to do that? Can they not make the property actually be where you cannot rent those properties? We've got enough rentals around there. A few questions I have and I'm happy to give y'all a copy of the assessment that was done from the VRE on the accidents that happened downtown. But the questions, as Randy has said, is an assessment of the traffic and sidewalks and impact study been completed? Has there been a review of the traffic stops to assess the current issues with speeding and proper stops and other traffic-related incidents? And as he mentioned, why was the property not listed for sale instead of being deeded over? What's the plan for sidewalks to be added to West White Street and who will pay for those? And the new plan for the development mixed community, could that be changed to be able to have fewer homes but still be a developed community? And we also requested a 14-foot-tall privacy fence if this is approved to prevent people from walking through our properties that would also provide a barrier from light, sound, noise to the residents at the very minimum. We know that there's been many hours of discussions with the Tritt's regarding this. There has not been any time for us other than this 10 minutes, so I would ask that this be tabled or there be some additional discussions before this moves forward. I just don't want to see this turn into what Douglasville was. So, I just think that these above questions that need to be addressed in accordance with the attorney that we've spoken to as well. So, thank you.
Okay, is anyone else to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Neil Pruitt. My wife and I own a property at 106 Colt Drive on the White Street side of the proposed development. And I'd just like to reiterate the interest in a traffic study being conducted just to the point of White Street being, there being no sidewalk. And I think that adding a sidewalk on White Street could be beneficial. Adding stop signs at the White a sidewalk on White Street could be beneficial, adding stop signs at the White Street entrance to the proposed development could be beneficial. So, just would like to propose a traffic study to assess that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have what?
A minute and 43 seconds.
A minute and 43 seconds.
My name is Brienne Strobeck. I live at 120 West White Street. My main concern is there is an access road that runs from my driveway and goes around the back of 124 West White Street all the way to the top of the hill. I use that access road to get to West White Street because my house sits on such a steep hill that West White Street is. So, backing out onto the street is very dangerous for me and my guests and my neighbors. So, my main concern is will that access road still be available to me and my guests so that they're not backing out into what is such a dangerous road? Thank you.
Anyone else? Do y'all have any rebuttal to what's been said?
Just remember to leave it with the points that were brought up.
Yes, sir. My main rebuttal is around the traffic. I pulled a Georgia Department of Transportation traffic numbers. They did a study in September and October of 2024 is what the website reflects. And based on that, three vehicles per day, which I think is probably a bit high for, you know, those units, but we'll go off the three vehicles per day. Based off the current traffic on West White Street, we're looking at about a 1.6% increase. And based off the traffic on Rome Street currently by the Georgia Department of Transportation study, we're looking at about a 1.5% increase.
I do have a question for you, Mason, if you don't mind. The lady that just spoke about the access road, do you think it would be a possibility to leave her access on to the exit that's going to be created there on to West White Street?
I think it's possible. I don't want to say with any certainty right now based on the way that kind of grade falls off right there. But we would be open to working something out to kind of create a pad in the back if we needed to, where we could do a turnaround in the existing drive to pull out forward versus having to back out onto that street. If we could leave the road, obviously in an ideal world, we would to create access up to that exit. I just don't want to guarantee that right now.
Yeah, is that access road, ma'am, if you don't mind? I've got a question for you, if you know the answer to this. Are you the owner of the property that you're?
I'm the owner of 120 West White, yes.
Okay. And do you know if that access road is on your property or on the?
When I bought the house, I was told the city, the access road was part of city property, but that was the main selling point of me buying that house, was that I would have that access to the main road so that I wouldn't back out onto it.
Okay, okay. I understand your concern about people topping that hill and pulling out there, so that would be, you know, something that I think would be a good play if we can make that happen.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
So, all right.
Amanda, I have one question for you. You can just, would you come back to the mic, please? I'm sorry. I was just looking at that. So, you said when they sold you the property, they told you you would have access to that access?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that was city property, and I don't, I mean, somebody gave you some misinformation, but I understand what you're saying because I live on Stewart Street, and I have a hill not quite as bad as yours, but is there any way that you have space that you could, you know, pull in, I mean, turn around so that you're not backing out in the street, or is your?
It's a very narrow driveway already, and I don't have like a garage or anything. It's a carport.
Okay.
So, it's a very narrow space.
Yeah.
So, I just, I use that small access road. I know 124 West White also uses it to gain access to the main road.
Okay, all right. Thank you, dear.
One more thing.
Oh, wait.
Okay, from the top of the hill, the house that the Tritt's have under contract is the small one. If you're looking at the access road, it's to the left of that access road. Am I correct about that? Which house is yours from there?
Mine is, okay, so you have the two blue houses where the access road is. Mine is two down.
Okay.
From that blue house that they're tearing down.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I would like to address, you know, some of the things that have been brought up. When this development first was looked at by the planning commission, I had a few people from Abbey Place reach out to me about some concerns that they had. You know, one was that they would be losing a play area for the children in Abbey Place. One was the proximity of the new development to their development. And then there was also the concern about all the additional traffic coming through Abbey Place for the new development. So, I came back and talked to Mr. Brooks about the property that the city did own or does own that's adjacent to this property. It doesn't have, there's a 25-foot easement on to this property that the city owns. There's an encroachment by one of the houses that are, that's there now, which kind of reduces it down to even about a 20-foot access on to that property. I said, you know, the people in Abbey Place have been there a good long time now. They have these concerns. Is there any way that we could use this property that is owned by the city? This property was actually given to the city during previous administrations several years ago. And, you know, I said, is there a way to improve the proposed development and help the Abbey Place people if we incorporate this property in with the property that they own now? And so, that's where this, you know, taking this city property and adjoining it with the developer's property came about, was we were trying to address the concerns that came up with the Abbey Place development. And Abbey Place is, you know, the most highly affected by any additional development that ties on to their street, in my opinion. So, that was the purpose for, there's a lot of low-lying property within that three acres or so that the city owns, but I thought it would be helpful to create play area for both communities, probably relocate some of the retention pond area, give some more separation between the two developments, which would create more of a two-community rather than having all the new units jammed up next to the existing development. The Abbey Place development is, if I'm not mistaken, about 10 units to the acre. The proposal is to build about seven units to the acre in the new development. Also, that city property wasn't, there wasn't enough access on the city property to create an exit on to West White Street, so I suggested to the developer that they come up with a better access on to West White to relieve some of the traffic that would be going through the Abbey Place development. So, that's kind of where all that came from. The city had no monetary expense in picking up the three acres there. It was something that was given to the city, like I said, during a previous administration. And the guy that donated the property to the city was able to get a tax write-off for making that donation to the city. So, the city had no money tied up in that property. My opinion was that if we could use that property to improve that development, create some green space between all the residents on West White Street, the ones on Rome Street, create a buffer between any new development there, that it was a good idea to use the property for that purpose, so.
Mr. Tritt, what's the buffer that you're suggesting, or y'all have agreed to on the, between the Campbell property and Indulge? Is, Erica, is there a buffer there?
There'll be a required buffer. The concept plan far exceeds the required buffer. The required buffer per the ordinance, if there is attached adjacent to single-family, you have an option. You can have 50-foot undisturbed, 20-foot planted, or 10 feet planted with a fence. So, if no other considerations are made tonight, they would have those three to choose from, unless you guys condition it otherwise.
Okay, all right. Mr. Tritt, have y'all decided on which of the buffers you're going to go with on that?
I'm Tony Tritt. I live at 2219 Oak Grove Church Road, and I'm one of the owners of Tritt Quality Homes. Final engineering will ultimately determine that once we figure out what the grade is like. How much of that dirt do we actually have to move to achieve what we want to do? As you can see, well, it's not up now, but where the actual units will be versus those properties on Rome Street, I mean, our speculation from dwelling to dwelling is going to be, I mean, I'm ballparking this, 250 feet, maybe closer to 300. It's a substantial distance. The actual buffer that's disturbed or undisturbed, we're just not going to know until the engineers get done determining how much, how many cubic yards of dirt we need to move.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I would like to make another recommendation. If this were to be approved, that the same fencing that is proposed behind the units on the left going into your development, be continued behind the Indulge property and the other house that faces Rome Street and the houses that face West White Street as well, that the same fencing that you have on your proposal to use along the units, one through, I think it's nine, and then the retention area and that kind of thing. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I could just interrupt. That's going to need, if someone does, is so inclined to make a motion, that specific condition is going to need to be made in the motion.
Okay.
Because the way the ordinance reads, they have the option unless you specifically state otherwise.
Okay.
So, if it's only to those lots, you would need in your motion to have which lots are affected by number on the concept plan that was submitted with the application.
Okay. It was the Rome Street properties, which would be Indulge, Ms. Campbell's property, and then the property in the corner. I don't, does that touch, that, it doesn't touch it? Okay, all right. And then the properties on West White Street?
Yeah, the properties that front West White that would back up to the development, and then Ms. Campbell's property and the property for Indulge. And it's my understanding that we can't do, because of city ordinance, we can't build a 14-foot-tall fence, but we can put a fence up that would keep people from just being able to walk through on to your property from this new development. But like Mr. Tritt said, you know, there's going to be, in my opinion, at least a couple of hundred feet between the back of the townhomes that have been proposed and your properties. So, but I think a fence to keep people from walking through there is warranted, and I would like to get that added.
Okay.
Mr. Tritt, what height fence are you putting around your retention ponds and the fence he's talking about?
So, on the back of units one through 14, we've got a proposed 10-foot buffer there with a 6-foot privacy fence per city ordinance. Around the pond, it doesn't require a 6-foot fence. What would be actually on the pond if we had a casting place pond? But for that buffer, we've got the 6-foot privacy fence proposed.
So, and that's what, just to clarify, Councilman Ledbetter, that's what you propose being 6-foot privacy fence between those properties?
That's correct.
Any other questions of the developer? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the two rezoning request with all the recommended, the part that you put on, do you have that?
Yes, ma'am. I have that. Condition four would be the approval shall be conditioned on a successful development agreement with the city regarding the city-owned property. And then condition number five should include the fencing language that Mr. Ledbetter discussed.
Okay, all right. So, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Okay. All right, so the motion is to allow the rezoning with the condition that Ms. Griffiths just read, with the condition of the fencing being a 6-foot privacy fence that would back up to the property adjacent to the property that's being rezoned, which at this time we're aware includes Indulge Day Spa, Ms. Campbell's property on Rome Street, and the property connecting on West White Street. And this would be a 6-foot privacy fence. That's the motion.
Including the first three conditions as well, correct?
Yes.
That Ms. Stutter mentioned.
Right.
Thank you.
Those are part of the planning commission's recommendations.
Correct.
All right. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, we have three in favor and one opposition, so the motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is a special use and rezoning request. Ms. Stutter?
The second zoning item on your agenda is a rezoning request. The request is to rezone a portion of the out parcels. One minute?
Yeah, okay. Sorry, give them a minute.
The request is to rezone a portion of the tract that was originally annexed and rezoned as M1 for what we now know is the Fastenal Development that's occurring on Bankhead Highway. The petitioner would request that 21.08 acres that basically serves kind of as the frontage of that development closest to Bankhead Highway be rezoned to C2 with a special use permit to allow for light manufacturing. These tracks serve as out parcels for the Fastenal Development. There will be interior roads built and constructed, as you see on the concept plan that was submitted with the development. The concept plan shows nine out parcels. They would ask for flexibility on, you know, if they sell one or two together. The plan would be to basically have these as almost kind of a light industrial flex space so that they could both be retail or light assembly. The petitioner is also requesting that one of the conditions that was originally included in the annexation concerning the buffer adjacent to the church be eliminated. This condition is no longer necessary or warranted. The church is going to be relocating their primary entrance away from Bankhead Highway on to one of the newly constructed streets. Therefore, the buffer is no longer needed. And the applicant is working with the church and alongside the church, and they actually did speak at the planning commission meeting in favor of the request. The planning commission did make two recommendations, a recommendation to approve with two conditions. The conditions are that a 10-foot landscaping The conditions are that a 10-foot landscape strip be installed along both sides of the new church drive. That was in response to something they had negotiated with the church. And then number two, that Article 2.04, .26D of the UDO that limits special use permits for light manufacturing in the C2 to just two years, that that be waived. The intention behind this development is that these be permanent uses. The planning commission did approve this request 7 to 0.
Okay. And we do have a copy of the agreement between Bethlehem Temple Church of a New Beginning to the Anchor Construction in agreement and what the terms were in their application. So we do have that. Okay. Do we have anyone here? And the same thing that I read earlier about the, when addressing rezoning issues, applies to any rezoning that we would have tonight. So do we have anyone here to speak in favor of this? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Matthew Smith, professional engineer and principal with Anchor Construction here on behalf of Fastenal Company. Worked with the staff through this, both with the initial annexation.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you please state your address for the record?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. My apologies. 7121 Grape Road, Granger, Indiana, 46530. We've worked with staff through this process, including with the initial annexation and rezoning process up until now. Have appreciated working with them, concur with their analysis, and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Is there any questions from the council? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone to hear, here to speak in opposition of this project?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Kenneth Farmer. I'm at 1765 Center Point Road, Temple, Georgia. I really got a concern here because of the traffic. We have a lot of traffic already, and we have a lot of traffic problems in this area. This proposed road that's gonna be put in, it doesn't appear that the road, the Old Airport Road, would have access to trucks. Most of the trucks that are gonna be coming and going are gonna be 18-wheelers, 80,000 pounds of weight traveling in and out, going onto a road that says no trucks allowed over six wheels, whether they're coming or going from the red light. I know there was discussion last time about possible ingress, egress easement, you know, in front of the proposed road and everything. Nothing was really discussed. I find it hard to believe that we could get a rig turned into that road without moving over into a lane to enter into the property the way it is. That is a big concern. And most of you have been behind a tractor-trailer before and have witnessed, most all of them have on the back, do not pass on the right-hand side. And there's a reason for that. Because when trucks need more space, they move over into the left lane so they can make the turn and get into the right. Sometimes people are not paying attention, and they do try to pass. I've got a concern about that. I mean, safety is always an issue. I mean, one person's life versus how many. I don't see the landscaping as a big deal. I mean, 10-foot, that's a little bit more than a car width on each side. You've got northbound and southbound traffic trying to get into a future development that there's really no way for northbound traffic to enter in there. So that means they're gonna have to travel north and try to turn between one to three spaces or intersections there that you could actually, in a passenger car, it's difficult, especially at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon or in the mornings. In the past 20-some-odd years, I've witnessed many, many, many accidents there. I have difficulty myself getting in and out of my own property right now. I can only imagine how many other vehicles are gonna be coming and impacting the, you know, traffic right there. I don't know if a traffic study's been done or recommended. I do believe something needs to be done. If the roads being built, or the future roads being built are designed to accommodate the trucks, then so be it. We need to look at that and how much traffic is gonna be coming and going in a Monday through Friday, you know, busy week anyway. Weekends are not so bad. But as I said, bringing traffic in, is it one-way in and then going out on Old Airport? Or is it both, coming and going? I mean, 60-foot, I think, is what it showed to be here on the road. But as I said, if they come out on Old Airport Road and make a mistake and turn right, there is no way for the truck to turn around or to turn into a road. Most all of them do say no trucks over six wheels. The house at the end of Old Airport has guardrails, and there are guardrails in front of the house. And the reason the guardrails are there is because cars have a tendency of missing the stop sign and going right into the people's yard in their house. Don't know that a tractor-trailer would even go right and try, you know, to figure out how to turn around at that point because he's not gonna be able to turn left or right or anywhere. And as I said, behind the QuickTrip, if there is no trucks allowed on that road, I don't know that the city owns any roads there. I'm sure there are state on 166 and county, state and county. Don't know who's gonna maintain this future road that is being put in, if it's gonna be deeded over to the county and there to maintain it. I don't know if Georgia DOT has been involved in this. But I think that the board needs to look at this a little bit more on the traffic issue and the safety issue of the people. Not just me, because I'm there more than a lot, but there's, that's a lot of traffic coming into the city down that road every day. And I just feel that if the board requests a traffic study to see and gets Georgia DOT to possibly put some input, I still don't know how northbound traffic will get to this property. And southbound, southbound will definitely have a problem getting in and out also.
Mr. Farmer, you said you lived at 1765 Central Point Road?
Center, Center Point. It's off of 113.
Oh, but you owned the property at 17?
1730, which is in front of this proposed development that they're wanting to rezon. I think at the last meeting, I did mention that 1730 Bankhead Highway, you know, was my property too. You'll see the median cut right in front of my property. And as I said, that's how I access my property when I'm going north. And as I said, no tractor-trailer can make that transition right there. And even all the way, I don't know how far up. I haven't really checked. But if they even make it to the red light at 166 and 61 right there, at what we call the triangle, there is no way that the 18-wheeler can do a U-turn or make that turn.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Farmer, hang on just a second. Do you have access on to your property off of Bankhead Highway right now?
I do.
Okay. What is, what kind of access do you have?
Well, when QuickTrip was being built, I had about a 30-foot drive. And they were, you know, basically gonna fix the road where I was not gonna have adequate access to get my trucks and trailers in there.
Mm-hmm.
And as I said, I'm very familiar with 18-wheelers and the weight and everything and the safety, okay? And when I say that, I requested that the state DOT get involved with the QuickTrip planning and everything and tidwell construction. And we all come to an agreement that, you know, the A-cell, D-cell lane needed to be put in for the people that are coming down there to try to move over and slow down to get into QuickTrip. And as I said, not everybody understands 55 or 60 miles per hour. You know the deal. I do. Some of them kind of go a little faster. And as far as stopping, it's kind of hard to stop a car sometimes and turn in. And as I said, I've witnessed so many wrecks and accidents there over the years. I don't want to see any more, if you know what I mean. But like I said, we can't stop them all.
Right. Yeah, I'm just curious if, and maybe this is more of a question for you, if y'all have contacted DOT and are they gonna require a D-cell lane to come into this property? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Thank you. So I'll try to do this in an orderly fashion. I'll address DOT first of all. We have been in contact with DOT. They're actually one of the first people we contacted when we were looking at this property last year. They, I believe it's Mike Govis with GDOT that we've been in contact with so far. And that's a contact that city engineer, Mr. Holland, had given to us to coordinate on that. Almost certainly, they will require a deceleration lane and probably an acceleration lane as well. That's all gonna be designed in during the engineering process. Of course, this is a rezoning hearing. We have not gone through all the design and engineering for these driveways yet, at least not for the eastern driveway there on Bankhead. So to address that eastern driveway in Bankhead, one of the reasons that we're here and one of the reasons that one of the conditions has to do with the church's access is actually because of safety. GDOT wouldn't even allow us to put a driveway there if the church's driveway still existed there. That's why we have worked out an agreement with the church to combine our driveways and allow them access off of our new one. The new one, by its very nature, will be newly designed, newly engineered, and will be safer up to current GDOT design standards. It will be a right turn in, right turn out only driveway because that median there in the divided highway is in the way. We are not proposing a new median cut or anything like that. That'd be a stretch to try to get approved for GDOT anyway, so we're not even gonna go there. So that'll be a right turn in, right turn out only. As such, it has limited functionality and usability for Fastenal's development. So their primary access is intended to be the driveway off of Old Airport Road. That driveway is designed specifically to allow truck traffic in from Old Airport Road, obviously, and then only to allow left turn out, that is, towards the highway and not away from the highway. Because we understand that as you go north there, it's residential purely and certainly not designed for truck traffic. This access off of Old Airport, the potential for, the potential that improvements may need to be required on Old Airport, that's all been discussed with city staff already, and we're happy to work with them on what's gonna be required there. As part of this driveway installation, we are already proposing a deceleration lane off of Old Airport into that driveway, again, to allow traffic to be separated as fast as possible and to improve safety. As far as a traffic study, that's another one of those things that I can just by guarantee GDOT will require. So we will perform that as required by GDOT as part of the full design and engineering process as we go in to get that approved. I think I addressed most of the questions. Happy to answer any more you might have.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition?
The gentleman stated about in and out. I guess it goes back to, how are we gonna get northbound traffic, tractor-trailers, into this property? Plain and simple. Northbound.
So I think I can answer that from just being in the meeting of the original zoning when it was, when we just rezoned it and annexed it for Fastenal. When you say northbound, you're talking about from Kelton towards Villareca?
That's correct.
So then they would access that off of Old Airport Road. They would turn in, just like the tankers already accessed to the QuickTrip and the QuickTrip and the racetrack there. Then they would do a D-cell lane right past that. And they, with the original zoning, they will make the drive as close to the QuickTrip as possible and as far away from that first resident as possible. That was one of the conditions of zoning in the original zoning back last year when it was just Fastenal and it was, did not have the plans yet for the commercial out parcels and some of the retail.
So the trucks over six wheels sign doesn't mean anything.
Well, there'll be upgrades and improvement to that point, to that drive as part of the development.
If you get some time, I'll buy you some coffee, stop into QuickTrip, try to get out in the morning and in the afternoon, and see how much traffic is there on Old Airport now without any tractor-trailers behind QuickTrip.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Yeah. We'll see if you understand.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, I would want to, before we were to consider this, I would want to add a condition that the traffic measures that are required by DOT on Bankhead Highway and the, you know, the additional requirements for the Old Airport Road be part of this, you know, part of the conditions before a CO would be approved for any development there, that just all GDOT requirements and improvements that are necessary for Old Airport Road be done prior to any CO being released on this proposed property.
So what you're asking for, Mr. Ledbetter, is that all GDOT requirements be done before any certificate of occupancies would be given to Fastenal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the special use and rezoning request for the Bankhead portion of the M1 Light Industry to C2 General Commercial special use, allowing for light assembly and manufacturing? The applicant being Anchor Construction with a stipulation and requirement that all GDOT requirements be met before a certificate of occupancy could be issued?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry to interrupt that motion. There were two additional conditions that planning commission recommended, numbered one and two on page 40. Ms. Studdard mentioned those. The 10-foot landscape strip to be installed along, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. That was the last one. Sorry. Just the one condition. I apologize.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're correct. There's two. The motion should include Mr. Ledbetter's as well as the two conditions recommended by them.
Yeah, I just want to make sure because you only said the one. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Gibbs, would you restate your motion for us, please?
Well, I do restate the motion. You've got part of the rope down.
Well, the motion, I'm pretty sure, was that the special use and the rezoning request be approved with the recommendations of the planning commission and additionally by Councilman Ledbetter that all GDOT requirements be completed before a certificate of occupancy was issued to Fastenal.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. The next one is rezoning and waiver request for 91 Hayes Street.
Hang on, I grabbed the wrong. All right. The final rezoning request tonight is a rezoning request at 91 Hayes Street, and the request is from R15 to R8. Both of those are single-family residential. The petitioner is making this request in order to subdivide a .38 acre tract and create an additional building lot at the intersection of Hayes Street and Alabama Street. Planning Commission reviewed this during their December meeting, and during that, during that meeting, they did make a recommendation for approval. They did have two conditions included, and they're on page 60. One, a waiver to reduce the front setback along Alabama Street from 40 feet to 20 feet shall be approved. Number two, the new resident shall front Alabama Street with driveway access off of Hayes Street. This is a similar construction type that you see at Myrtle Street and Highway 27 North that was approved in the last year or so. That particular home at the corner of Myrtle and 27 is the one that's being proposed for this particular lot.
Okay.
And the applicant is here.
Okay. Do y'all wish to address the council?
Andy Mills, I'm at 2190 Lakeview Parkway in Villarica, 30180. We're the owner of the 91 Hayes Street, and just reiterating the split of the lot to be able to construct a new property there with the driveway into Hayes Street and fronting Alabama with a nice architectural presentation. We plan to build a very nice property there.
Okay.
Any questions?
I don't have any. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to grant the rezoning and waiver request with the conditions of the Planning Commission? Is there any other conditions to be added? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to grant the rezoning and the waiver request.
I so moved the motion to rezon waiver request for R, from R15 to R18 with the special conditions as allowed, a waiver to reduce the front setback along Alabama Street from 40 feet to 20 feet. And the second one is the new resident shall front Alabama Street with driveway access off of Hayes Street.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is Resolution 012025, which is a coin-operated amusement machine ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, we discussed this in our work session. With the popularity of the coin-operated amusement machines, we are, I tasked Community Director, Development Director, Ms. Studdard, to do some research on what other cities were doing in terms of having a good inventory of how many that we have, where they're located, and what type of restrictions other cities municipalities place on them. And we have, she has developed a solid ordinance based on GMA's model ordinance along with some other pieces of it she's gotten from other municipalities. We talked about it in our work session. The biggest thing it would do is just reduce or set a limit on the number of machines that you could have in one location, as well as very much like our alcohol ordinance, proximities to churches, schools, things of that nature. As we discussed in our work session, we would ask that you would approve that resolution this evening.
You have a copy, you've received a copy of the proposed ordinance, I mean, yeah, in your packet. Do I have a motion to approve the coin-operated amusement machine ordinance?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is any questions, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is Resolution 022025, which is the fire code ordinance amendment.
This is another one, Madam Mayor, that we discussed in our work session. We've been discussing this for quite some time now. This resolution puts us in line with the state fire code requirements in basically two areas. One is the, like, storage buildings, warehouses. Our current ordinance is anything 5,000 square feet or above must be sprinkled, where the state average is 12,000 is the minimum. So we're proposing that we go follow the state fire code on warehouses and storage as well as fire suppression systems in multifamily units. We still are, will be more stringent than the state requirement. The state requirement does not require you to have any fire suppression in your hoods. We're simply changing hours from having it, having to be tied into the entire sprinkler system to just to have a self-contained fire suppression system in case of a grease fire, things of that nature. And those are the two major changes. The Appendix D that the council adopted several, several years ago still is intact. It is, it is obviously a requirement by the state fire code. That's in terms of fire hydrant, width of roads, fire hydrants, width of cul-de-sacs, things of that nature.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 0225, the fire code ordinance amendment?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the 2025 election qualifying fee schedule.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you read in your memo, the state of Georgia requires us to establish qualifying fees for the November 2025 election. Those fees are estimated, estimated at 3% of the total gross salary of the office paid. Ms. Beaver, she must have had an excellent high school math teacher, because she figured out those numbers, I mean, just like that, and come up with a council member qualifying fee of $216. And we're asking that you approve that tonight.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025 election qualifying fees?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.